We are convened here, actually our full board is here, but we have two people participating by phone, Donna Tyner and Eric Simpson are participating. This is a formal process, I just want to sort of go through it for everybody so that you'll know what to expect. And what we'll do is we'll give a time.
Excuse me, Anne, just kind of dropping off there.
Okay, we're gonna move the phone closer to me. And then Donna, if you give me a text if you need something, that'd be great. It's funny, we're sort of working out the technology, you are screaming when you talk to us, but I know that you can barely hear us, so we're gonna try to work out this technology. I believe that we can get this done. So the process for tonight is gonna be that we're gonna give our complainant, the Foresters, an opportunity. We have 10 minutes allotted for you to be able to summarize anything that you would like. We have all had an opportunity to review the materials that you submitted, we appreciate you getting that to us ahead of time. And then we will have the same time for district staff, likewise, we've reviewed the materials that you've submitted. And at that point then, we'll leave an opportunity for board members to ask any questions that they would like, so that they fully understand. And then we'll have time for deliberation, and we'll make a decision here tonight. It'll be recorded in our meeting minutes, as well as in a letter that I will be sending out by the end of today's Thursday. By Tuesday, I'll give you a couple, at least one business day to get it done. So with that, I'd like to turn the time over to the Foresters.
Thank you, and I would like to first thank the school board for meeting tonight, I appreciate that. And I apologize in advance because I expect to slightly exceed the 10 minutes left in the morning. I hope that's okay, but it should be by very much, and I want the record to be complete for the board's benefit, and I appreciate having a full and fair opportunity to hear. Phoenix is with me today because this isn't my appeal, it's his, and this is not just about policy, it's about a person, this one. There is no dispute between the parties, I believe, as to what BSD policy IKAR and Beaverton High School academic planning guide actually state.
I'm sorry, I'm getting a message from Donna that she's not able to hear.
Is, can Eric hear?
Yeah, let me check. Oh, no, Eric says no also.
What if Donna called my phone?
I was gonna say, what if I just put my phone near her?
Yeah, I might be good.
Okay, I have too.
Okay, why don't you have him call Tom, so that he, we're gonna...
Yeah, tell him to call into the conference line. Well, what I could do is I could number phone by Laura when Laura's speaking, and then the district, and then...
Call over the conference line.
I wanna make sure she hears what you're saying.
This is how you should call into the conference line?
Sure.
Okay, and then Eric?
No, call over the conference.
You call it, and then you'll be able to put it next to them.
Right.
If you, if it's connected, that is...
Oh, I see.
I'll call somebody.
Sorry.
Okay, will you text what?
So I'm adding this, so he's gonna call in as a host then?
We'll keep it just calling as a participant.
Yeah, he can.
Yeah. And we have that.
Uh, I got that just...
It's the same phone.
Yeah, just a different access.
He'll just ask you for, are you a host or participant?
I'm fine.
You can leave that here.
No, I'm fine, it's okay.
Tom Collette. I think Jamie...
But what if you...
I think I just call him by, by phone.
Oh, well done.
We'll be calling Donna. And then we could just move that phone.
Well, we need to call Eric as well, can you do a combo? Yeah, you have to merge the calls, yeah.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, so let's get Donna first, then I'll grab Eric.
You could, I want that seat for the last row of the conference.
It's not gonna echo your voice.
Hey, hang on a second, Donna, I'm gonna patch Eric in here too, okay?
All right.
The one thing we won't be able to hear is if they have questions.
They're texting me, which is why I'm very rudely keeping my phone up at all meetings, I'm so sorry.
And if somebody, you'd rather than text me, so that you can...
I already have Donna's questions on my phone.
Hey, I'm gonna merge you and Donna, and I'm gonna put you on speakerphone, and I'm gonna put you by Laura who's about to start her 10 minutes, okay?
If you want to do everybody here, move them.
Okay, so Donna and Eric, can you hear me?
Yes, sounds good.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna put you guys by Laura, and then we're gonna move you over to the district when they give their side of the case. I'm gonna mute you, so if you have questions, please text Anne your question.
Sounds good, thank you guys.
Got it?
Got it.
Donna, got it?
Yes.
Awesome.
Thank you. Tom, I'll move it for you.
All right, we're ready.
Thank you. As I was saying, I believe there is no dispute between the parties as to what the policies and the academic planning guide actually state. They are written in plain language. Dual credit classes are transferable to a university, dual, excuse me, dual credit classes that are transferable to a university are weighted. All PCC dual credit classes are transferable to, at a minimum, Oregon universities. Marketing One is a PCC dual credit class. Ergo, Marketing One is a weighted class. What's been made public by the school and the district is very simple and straightforward. There is also, to my knowledge, no dispute between the parties as to whether there is anything written and published.
She's looking. Anything? Sorry.
There's sometimes a personal conference call. They shouldn't be moved to the side.
Thank you.
Maybe that'll do it.
Paperclip solution now, I guess.
There is also, to my knowledge, there's also, to my knowledge, no dispute between the parties as to whether there is anything written and published in the district's policies or the BHS academic planning guide that would indicate Marketing One is not a weighted class. There's simply nothing publicly available to students and their families that would indicate otherwise. So I believe we're all in agreement so far. The question is what to do about that? Only that shouldn't be a question. This should have been resolved by school counselor, a vice principal at most. Just follow the district's policies and the school's academic planning guide. But I'm here before you today because every GSC employee and every opportunity has refused to do so. Written policies serve a fundamental purpose in our society. We have rules, policies, laws, regulations, so that everyone knows their rights and responsibilities. And we write them down, so that there's no confusion about those rights and responsibilities. This has been the case ever since Hamrabi struck chisel to rock. Only the district doesn't want to play by those rules. The district's captain and his crew do not want to follow district-written policies or honor what the Beaverton School, High School, published in its academic planning guide. They won't do it. And I shudder to think of the resources, taxpayer dollars being wasted, just to make sure that the district doesn't have to follow its own policies. Uh?
Tom, it's possible you muted your phone. So just leave it unmuted.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, little period.
Yeah, let's start over.
I think you're... The resources being wasted, just to make sure that the district doesn't have to follow its own policies, when you have more than 40,000 students to educate and to help become good citizens, citizens who follow the law, who follow rules, who follow policies. And I'm asking you, the board members, to be those good citizens yourselves. Model that for your 40,000 students, starting here, with this one. Superintendent Brodding upheld those denials on the basis of what he describes as clear intent and practice. Okay, let's talk about intent. The way the real world works is that people are stuck with what they write. After the fact, after they've written something, their intent is immaterial. If a contract is ambiguous, it's construed by the courts against the party that drafted it. Why? Because the party writing it had every opportunity to express their intent clearly and unambiguously. Beaverton High School and the Beaverton School District had every opportunity to express their intent clearly and unambiguously. BHS and the district couldn't have been more clear. Dual credit classes transferable to a university are weighted. All PCC dual credit classes are transferable to, at a minimum, Oregon universities. Marketing One is a PCC dual credit class. It's clear. The legislator leaves out an Oxford comma, and a dairy farmer has to pay up for the coverers $5 million. The dairy farmers hadn't written statute themselves, but they were stuck with it all the same. But wait, it wasn't the legislator's intent to pay overtime, it wasn't dairy farmers' intent to pay overtime, but that's what they wrote, their intent is immaterial. In the real world, you're stuck with what you wrote, and here, the Beaverton High School and the Beaverton School District did do the writing themselves. These are not someone else's words, these are your words. And we're not talking about a missing comma, we're talking about, excuse me, BHS and the district clearly and unequivocally stated in writing and published for the benefit of all of its students and their families, that dual credit classes are transferable to, dual credit classes transferable to university are weighted. All PCC dual credit classes are transferable to, at a minimum, Oregon universities. Marketing One is a PCC dual credit class. So intent really has no role here, but let's just say that it did, for some reason contrary to the law. Okay, so let's talk about that. Is the district's intent clear? Let's see. First, everything published and made available to students and their families is 100% clear and consistent, that this is a weighted grade. There is nothing in the district's policies to suggest otherwise, very clearly expressed. A student relying on it, you have no reason to suspect that further inquiry would be necessary or even prudent. But we did have further inquiry anyway, just to be sure. So when Phoenix read the BHS academic planning guide, and he saw that it indicated that his marketing grade would be weighted, he said, hold on, let's check into the district's policy, let's play it safe. And so I did. Lo and behold, it says the class is weighted, because it's transferable to a university. And so we done our due diligence. Okay, so intent, not really helpful to the district. But why did they say, we've got this working agreement in a file cabinet somewhere, electronic of course, but still. They brush it off. Let's talk about that. How accessible, even to district staff and school administrators, this is working agreement, this guidance from the teaching and learning department? How many school counselors, vice principals, and principals are actually familiar with it? Not the ones at Beaverton High School? When I asked Vice Principal Allison Dubuque to provide me with documentation, she passed. She pointed to Ken Struckmeyer. Okay, so now Mr. Struckmeyer is armed with this working agreement. Great, let's talk about that. Can he or anyone honestly say that it's complete and accurate, a complete and accurate representation of what classes the district points? No, it can't, and no one else can either, because it's not. Allow me to demonstrate. Mr. Struckmeyer, in his draft response to my appeal, not some casual conversation in the hall, this was his formal response to my appeal that he was drafting, he wrote that the district does not weight any business classes. Quote, "There are no weighted business classes in the Beaverton School District." That was his draft. He didn't know, and that's not right. Got it right, there are four weighted business classes. That wasn't reflected in his understanding of weighted classes, that wasn't reflected in his understanding of this supposedly clear intent. So where's that clear intent that Superintendent Brodding's responses rely on? Take Marketing Seminar as another example. Phoenix's forecast to take that next year. Vice Principal Barron, Barran, says it would be weighted. But wait, that's not reflected in this working agreement, that the district is pointing to as evidence of its clear intent. Mr. Struckmeyer's understanding of the district's intent was that Marketing Seminar is not weighted, and he couldn't explain the discrepancy. He directed me to Principal Anne Irwin. Dr. Irwin directed me back to Mr. Struckmeyer. When Dr. Irwin finally did meet with me and gave me my thesis after weeks of investigation and meetings on the part of the administration here, Dr. Irwin couldn't tell me if Marketing Seminar was weighted. More than two weeks later now, I'm still waiting for her response. What is clear is that there's absolutely no consensus within the district and the high schools with respect to weighted courses. The district and Beaverton High School administrators don't know, and they don't agree. As we sit here today, no one in the district, after weeks of investigation and confirming with each other and legal counsel, can say definitively whether or not Marketing Seminar is weighted. So to say at all that the district's intent is clear is the height of disingenuity. Even now, it's not clear. So with respect to clear intent, I would say that those words are empty and meaningless, except they are more than that. They are complete fiction, and for anyone to point to this working agreement specifically, and for Superintendent Brodding to have relied on that as evidence of clear intent, is dishonest. Superintendent Brodding also cited the district's practice as a reason to uphold the previous denials. Okay, let's look at that. We do need to do things consistently, remember that's why we break down our policies, regulations, and laws. So they can be followed consistently, not arbitrarily, preciously. So to justify not following the district's own policy by saying that it's a consistent practice to not follow the district's own policy is a grotesque exploitation of the notion of consistency. To say that the only thing you consistently do to not follow written and published documentation is illogical, circular, and a perverse plan for maintaining the district's so-called consistency. If this is the district's idea of a legitimate practice, it does not pass the smell test. Apart from not following district policy IKAR and weighting Phoenix's Marketing One grade as further detailed and described in the BHS academic planning guide, the district would also be violating BSD policy IK, which requires that any proposed significant changes are circulated to the community prior to being implemented. In not doing so, the district has denied Phoenix his constitutional right to due process. The district, a public entity, gained him something. They said his grade would be weighted. In good faith, he relied on that clear, consistent representation that the district and Beaverton High School made, and then the district took that from him, causing him harm without notice, without an opportunity to be heard, without any of the elements required by law. And hearing me out now after the fact in no way cures the district's failure to afford him the due process to which he is constitutionally entitled. Phoenix engaged in a very deliberative, specific planning process to reach a specific goal. He specifically relied on the BHS academic planning guide and BSD policy IKAR. He will suffer a specific harm if the district persists in refusing to follow its own policies. The problem here and the simple solution are obvious. I think everybody understands the situation. Mr. Struckmeyer, Ms. Hansman, Ms. Ostering, Superintendent Brodding, they are the best and the brightest of the school district. So it's not lack of understanding, and you, the board members, are intelligent, sophisticated people, and I trust you understand the situation. But it's become apparent that it takes more than an understanding to do the right thing here. It takes integrity. So I'm here tonight to find out if the board members of this Beaverton School District have the integrity it takes to do the right thing. Donna Brodding and Camellia Ostering are paid a lot of money to protect the Beaverton School District, protected from embarrassment, from lawsuits, as the end goal, as their job, among other things, of course. But let's be honest here, they have one constituent, the Beaverton School District. The board is in a very different position. You have 40-some thousand constituents, students whose families have elected you because your job is to protect them, the students, Phoenix. The district has plenty of people protecting it, the students have you. Maybe you have students in the district, maybe you don't, I don't know, but it should be of the gravest concern to you that the district is so willing to harm its students to violate its own policies and harm its students, and asking you to fulfill your obligations and your constituents, protect this student, please. They are fighting tooth and nail to not follow district policy. You can see from the district's documentation how many high-level administrators and the district's own legal counsel have been involved in trying to tamp this down. You can see how many weeks they've matted. It's outrageous. Equity and the law say the district is stuck with the policies and publications that it wrote and made public. The district can change those policies, the district can follow BSD policy IK and make changes, but those changes cannot be retroactive when you have a student who had a specific plan, specific reliance, and is now suffering a specific harm. Those changes cannot be made retroactive when you have a student who is denied his constitutionally guaranteed right to due process. What you do with other students is a separate matter, I don't know. Maybe you need to review each student's situation or agreements on a case-on-case basis. Did this student have a specific plan? Did this student specifically rely on what information the high school and district made public? Are we causing this student a specific harm? Can you make each individual decision accordingly? I don't know. I don't know that anyone here necessarily knows. But not knowing what to do for everyone else does not somehow exempt you from doing the right thing for Phoenix, when the solution here is known. You have a student here who needs every one of those elements, specific plan, specific reliance, specific harm, and a denial of due process. So you may not know what to do with everyone else right now, but you do know what to do for Phoenix. The school board has been vested with a tremendous amount of authority. You have the power to right the wrongs, even when everyone else has signed off on them. You have the authority to do that, and you have the duty. It's the board's responsibility to ensure that its students are protected, and that at the end of the day, district policies are followed. And I understand that with the wrong decisions being made at every level, the board has been placed in a very difficult position. I understand that it's harder to do the right thing the more people that have come before you doing the wrong thing. I get it. You have a relationship with everyone here that you need to maintain. So I understand this is inconvenient, this is uncomfortable, this is a challenging moment. But in the words of Dr. Mark Luther King Jr., "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands in times of challenge and controversy." Forward to finding out what measure each board member brings. If this goes to court, I will find out if you all have the character and integrity to right this wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I don't know if you want to leave your phone down. Does district staff have anything that you wanted to add to the materials that you had submitted?
We don't. We have everything from this Forester and us that we gave to you, and feel that is sufficient, but we can answer any questions you may have to.
Okay, fantastic. Board members, it appears to me that there really are two questions that we've been charged with to face today. The first is, and has policy IKAR, or I shouldn't say policy, has the administrative regulation IKAR been followed as written? And I suspect, and actually I guess I would like to propose, that I think district comments, as well as the Foresters, could agree that we don't follow it to the letter of that. And so rather than spend a lot of time talking about that, I would like to ask us to consider instead is, is the remedy that we have supplied adequate? So I guess what I, my first question is, is there agreement on the first question? Do board members want to feel like it's worth our time to explore further whether IKAR was filled to the letter of the law? Are there any questions that we've...
Yeah, I think everything that the district submitted, we are in agreement that we did not follow the IKAR practice, did not meet the policy.
May I reapply to that, or would you prefer that I don't?
If you follow the policy...
Yeah, I mean, if you'd like to argue that you are giving weighted credit for dual credit and other items, I guess, we would be open to that, but the superintendent's letter, I will say, suggests that we recognize that we were not, and that we need to adjust our AR in order to better reflect practice.
What I might add, to add some context, is that IKAR, in the section under weighted grades on page two of the document, 1B, there is a statement there that talks about dual credit courses need to meet standards of being transferable, which we heard, and that they're either taught at the home high school or part of a sequence which is not available or attainable within the home high school. That clause is very confusing, and I acknowledge that, and we have had that conversation with Ms. Forester, that that is very confounding language. But our practice around that language is that there's a distinction between dual credit courses that are at an advanced level, which is in number two, and those that are not, meaning that the level of rigor in number two must be considered in determining whether the dual credit meets the standard of 1B. And that is confusing, and the language from the superintendent was explained that this language needs to be addressed, and we need to have things published. So we're in consensus on that, but I would just add that, that context to help you make that determination.
And I guess I would say that, that's all good argument, the thing is, we had one side of the matter that knew the intent and how we practiced it, and we had our community who just come in and read something that is not explained to them. So if that had been explained maybe upfront, this is what we mean by this, even though we didn't say, we are all in agreement that it's confusing and going forward, how we need to fix it, and I think we're all in agreement with that too, that it needs to be fixed. But we have a situation here where both sides' intent, what they meant, have come to a collision force here, and we have to figure out, we know how to go forward, but how these two intents are meant to, and that's where it's confused.
I guess I have to follow a question, Ken.
Sure.
Because I'm having trouble following you, and I have read this language a lot. So I'm not sure, I think what you're suggesting is that it's a dual credit, taught at the high school, or part of a sequence that's not available at the home high school.
Correct. So there are going to be opportunities...
How would anyone know which or applies in this case? And I'm not really sure where the home high school fits into this conversation.
Right. So students, I'm gonna go with the more common practice. Students would enroll in a course at their high school, Beaverton High, it's a dual credit course, it's advertised as a dual credit course. And the question is, is the level of rigor there meeting the advanced standard that is also part of that description? So Math 95 would be a college course, that could be a dual credit course, but it's commensurate with pre-calculus, which doesn't meet the standard of advanced course that's defined by being an AP or IB course, or an equivalent level of rigor. And so there is a committee that meets monthly, and as courses come and go, the standard is applied to determine whether or not it meets that level. If a course were more advanced, if it were calculus, that would be a weighted math course. But a Math 95 would be a course that creates an understanding of math that would prepare them for the advanced level.
Excuse me, hello?
Yeah, yeah.
If there's something I can do, I can't hear Ken, like you and Becky are very clear, like I can't hear Ken's response.
We'll move you around, but I'm not gonna have Ken repeat himself.
Yeah.
You said change, I know from Donna's texting you previously, there seemed to be wide consensus that our AR and our practice are not in line. I would, rather than spend a lot more time on that, and Donna said the same thing to me via text message, I guess I would just, is this of interest to board members to continue? It seems the more interesting thing is, what should the remedy be?
Right.
Which the superintendent referenced in his letter about what our proposed solutions were going to be, and whether those were commensurate to the issues that had been raised by the Foresters. So I guess I'd look to board members again to see if you had further questions on the initial issue, or if you would rather talk about remedy and ask more questions on that one. Is there, I would like to talk about remedy.
I agree 100%.
Okay, so we have wide consensus on that. All right. All right. So with that, I'd like to open up the time for board member questions on that frame. And Donna's saying remedy. And we'll move the phone. I'm going to tell me a runner. Because I'm just going to move this, Dave, so that it's close to boarders talking.
I guess my question is, is there a harm that could occur from the requested remedy? Right? By granting the remedy and weighting the grade for Phoenix, is that going to create harm to other students at the high school?
So I guess I'll turn that to staff, because I would expect the foresters to be able to address that question.
So one thing for us to consider is there are students that are currently enrolled in the remedy, or then could be done in a way that's fairly clean perhaps. Our concern might be for calculations such as class rank, valedictorian for current students. And then the question is, this has been our practice since 2009, and we have a committee that has been calibrating that practice since 2009. And what impact might that have on alumni of the Beaverton School District?
If we're looking at the calculation of class ranking and becoming a valedictorian, right, that's only looked across a single year, right, like across the freshmen?
That's accurate, yes.
If there was an adjustment, I mean, to all students who took that course, would that fit everybody on a level playing field?
Tom, to clarify, are you talking about if there were a remedy to everybody who took that course during this school year, would that fit everyone on a level playing field? The answer would be, that's one step toward it. My concern would be, are there other dual credit courses? Like can you remedy that in a way where that level of treatment is guaranteed to every town, every dual credit course across all of our schools? We would just want to be thoroughly thoughtful about that.
Okay, do you have any thoughts on how that could be instituted?
Well, if I don't mind piping in, I'm a little concerned.
Can you move the phone closer to me?
Oh, I'm, Phoenix, what grade are you, what year are you in? Yeah. So my concern now is, it's June 1st next week, and you've got seniors with transcripts and valedictorians, speeches, you know, all that kind of work. So there's a concern about, my immediate concern goes to the now, which is seniors. And they're in their last, you know, seven, eight days of school, and you've selected your valedictorian.
Leanne, do you have a question?
I have just a comment. Would you not, to be fair, have to go retroactively, should that change? Go retroactively to everybody that's in high school today that has taken Marketing One? Which could go back, because can a freshman take Marketing One?
It depends what school you're at, but it's some schools, yeah.
To really make it fair, you have to go back at least three, or other dual credit classes?
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing. There's a lot of other dual credit courses. And just to distinguish, it's possible that a student could take Marketing One for dual credit like Phoenix has, and other students on other campuses would take Marketing One that does not have a dual credit agreement. And the weighting would apply in the dual credit section if you were to provide that guidance.
So every, sorry, my question. So every high school has a different agreement with a community college or university?
Not everyone, but there could be different agreements.
Some schools have, some have Marketing One classes in their regular curriculum. It is not a dual credit.
Yes, Susan, some high schools may not have teachers that have a master's degree that allows them to be associated with a college.
So, okay, so it depends on what the teacher has in terms of...
Quite often, it depends on the certification of the teacher.
I know that, but I'd love to clarify that. So, yeah, it's interesting.
Yeah, so it does depend where you live. You know, and what attendance area you're in, to be quite honest with you. But that's, you know, that's not new. That's been happening for...
But at Beaverton High School, Marketing One is a dual credit class. And at some other high school, that may not be the case because the teacher is not accredited to have that college.
That could be one of the reasons, but that's the most obvious reason that would happen, yeah.
Are there other questions for board members? I have a few. And I'm waiting to hear from Donna and Eric to confirm if they do or not. My first one is, you know, I noticed that this AR was originally worked on many years ago. And I'm just curious, as we reflect, for students, what do we see as the benefit for weighted grades?
The intent, the intent of the board, as I recall, when this topic was first explored, probably 17 years ago, the intent was to encourage students to take more rigorous courses with the idea that more rigorous courses are going to prepare students with the habits in mind that allow them to thrive when they leave us. So particularly for university-level courses, but whatever path they were going to go, the idea would be that we were better preparing students to be ready.
It's interesting, you know, in those 17 years, really, how we have adjusted so much of our high school curriculum in order to align with the opportunities for students to graduate with college credit. So actually, my other question is for the foresters. My son attends Westview High School. He happens to be a freshman, taking Global Studies 9, which is introductory social studies class for all freshmen. He actually is receiving dual credit at Western Oregon as part of that class. Is that something that you think he should receive a weighted grade for?
Does the district have a relationship with Western Oregon?
Absolutely. That's how we get the credit.
Then yes, he should. PSU, PCC, Western Oregon, University of Timbuktu. If you have a relationship with them and they're getting credit, a university or college, whatever level, feels that that is worthy of college credit? Then yes.
So I have a question about weighted grades. So my son's at the university, and unfortunately, he doesn't take marketing, but, you know, I wish he would. But that's not the point. The point is, when he's in college, his grades aren't weighted. So the purpose of weighted grades for kids, I just, I heard what you said, but why are we doing that?
Well, it's been, it's been happening longer than any of us have been, you know, and I can't remember when it was. It was 2001 when it was first explored. Yeah, so that's 17 years ago.
Are weighted grades used for class ranking and determining the valedictorian?
Yes.
So it occurs to me that the specific harm has not occurred yet because they have not decided, Phoenix is, whether he's the valedictorian or whether he...
That's why I asked what grade he was in.
He isn't weighted, right? So the question is, on a longer-term timeframe, would there be a way to remedy this that would create a more fair outcome for everybody and prevent a specific harm to Phoenix?
May I say something, please? There is a massive harm. It's a very competitive market out there, particularly if you're trying to get into a top university. That is where grade point average really matters, in my mind. It doesn't matter if Phoenix is valedictorian or not. It matters which college he gets into. That will have a far greater impact on his life forever than whether or not he's valedictorian. So frankly, that's something that we don't care about. But top universities are looking closely at both weighted and unweighted grades. And so in order for him to be competitive, we would like the district to follow his policies. I don't want the district holding him back.
And would that mean then, this would need to be corrected before his applications went out?
Yes, he'll be applying in September for early action, early decision.
Okay, so we have a timeframe of early September? Okay. Just a thought from the doctor, please, the remedy.
I, a clarifying question. So do colleges and universities look at any outweighted grades?
Most do not.
Because I was, I was under the impression they do not.
They do, they look at...
Because they don't look at a 4.56, they look at 4.0.
Most of them, yeah, for the most part, it's here, it's unweighted. Not 100%, but most of them are unweighted, yeah.
In my experience with the research that we've been doing, the colleges and universities that Phoenix will be applying to, they absolutely look at weighted grades.
Superintendent, on this topic, did you have something to add?
Yeah, where do you want me? Just usually on college applications, what a college will do, they will ask you, are these grades weighted or are they not weighted? Because different high schools across the nation, there are some, many, that do not weight grades and some that do weight grades. So usually on the college application, colleges specifically ask if this GPA has been weighted or not weighted.
If I could add something quickly. It's in my experience, I've gone on a couple of college visits to different colleges in the area, and I've talked with a lot of the counselors there and the admissions officers and asked them about weighted versus unweighted grades. And they've said that they do look at both. That they'll put a weighted and an unweighted on there. And that, you know, that they do look at both. It's not just unweighted.
Yeah. And both of my kids apply to college too, usually because that weighted goes with the rigor. And most of the, what they talk about the most is the rigor of the type of classes that we took. So if it's IB or AP or whatever, those colleges are looking at your body of work of the kind of rigor that you put in. And usually, when you are taking college, like Writing 121 or whatever it is, it's because you're going for a more rigorous type class. So if it be any sort of course that's dual credit that becomes weighted, I still believe most of your top-notch are looking at the rigor of what the classes were and whether they were weighted or not weighted.
When we relied on the academic planning guides and the district policies, we thought we were getting that rigor. It said we were. So yes, we want to show rigor. We thought we were doing that.
And then, Forester, actually, I have a question, one more question for you. As you were putting together your four-year plan, I was really curious about what that process looked like in your interactions with your school. I know that they make available, probably on their website, as well as hand you a copy of their academic planning guide. Can you give me any more insight into what that actually looked like?
Right, so, well, when I was going into my freshman year, they, when the counselors came around and they, you know, said we could forecast, and so I just started looking at, you know, really, I didn't know exactly what I wanted to do, but I knew I wanted to challenge myself and take, you know, harder courses. But there wasn't too much, I didn't have very many courses that I had. There was a lot of required classes my freshman sophomore year.
Sure, not a lot of options.
Exactly. And so really...
Sorry, by the way.
Oh, no, it's fine. But starting this year, my junior year, there's, I, you know, got most of my required classes out of the way and I could, most of my classes this year were reflective. And so at the beginning of, well, forecasting during my sophomore year, I started going on the academic planning guide to, you know, check what classes I was interested in. I talked with teachers, I talked with current teachers to see what they were suggesting. And I said I wanted to take every single class that I was going to take, I wanted to have weighted. I'm in four EP classes, and so as my fifth class, I was going to take Marketing One because it was also weighted, as I understood, in the planning guide. So that was just my thought process, because I wanted to challenge myself and continue.
I would add that Phoenix is taking five classes because he has a marketing internship. It's not that he's slipping in.
Oh, no, yeah, yeah.
He's doing things outside of school to demonstrate his college readiness. Okay. Do board members have any other questions that they wanted to ask before we deliberate? Yeah, last I checked, no, but I'll check one more time.
I guess I have one question.
Yeah.
If you hadn't told early September to provide the requested remedy, would that allow you to do it in a manner that was fair and less disruptive to the current process in front of us right now?
I guess I don't know the answer to that. It depends on the guidance that we received from you. And clearly, you know, depending on if the remedy were similar to what was suggested prior to this from the superintendent's office, that's something we can expedite and do quite promptly. If we're talking about something that was specific to Phoenix, that's something we could do quite promptly. But if we're talking about a widespread judgment that's broader than that, we would do whatever you guided us to do, but it might be more involved. I don't know if that answered your question, Tom.
I mean, I think, Tom, the complication is that in order, I think that there's, I don't want to mistake it, but I think there's a feeling that if we remedied the situation for foresters, that we have to examine every dual credit class offered district-wide and apply the weighting for those. While taking into account that, for example, I'm already starting to deliberate, so I'm going to be clear here. You know, the Westview Course Catalog, it clearly indicates which courses are weighted. Including showing no weighting for Marketing One. And so you would be forced with this difficult conversation internally about what would that look like? Would we give Beaverton students Marketing One weighted credit but not Westview students Marketing One weighted credit? What if that Beaverton student moves to Aloha? Or how does that credit weight move with him? It becomes very complicated very quickly. Which is, I know, and my observation is, looking at the course catalogs, they are not universally the same. Westview, for example, puts a little dot next to every single weighted class we know ahead of time. The information that the foresters gave us, although I did not see a forecasting guide specifically, I could see in the course catalog, it did not say that. I also know, I mean, I would hope that counselors would have been very clear about what was weighted and what was not. It appears the foresters did not either seek that guidance or did not receive it for whatever other reasons. So, now, there are multiple places where we've fallen down. I think that part seems clear. So I don't know if that helps the kind of things that you're wondering.
Half of it. My question is, if the specific harm is going to occur in September, does that period of time before that harm occur give us an opportunity to remedy it in a fair way that doesn't...
Impact the seniors, I think.
Exactly. And that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I believe that that is true. And also, I would like to clarify for board members of then our role in this decision. If we're ready to move forward in the, if we are judging the remedy, whether it's been sufficient or not, we can decide to decide what the remedy should be. But I believe it is actually the board's role to just say, yes, the remedy met, or no, it did not. And then turn it back to staff to determine how to better make it match the situation. Rather than us, you know, using all of our, you know, non-professional expertise to decide what the remedy should be. So the question for us is really a yes or no. Was the remedy sufficient for this situation, or was it not? We don't have to solve the problem. We just have to decide if the solution that was proposed was sufficient.
Or, I believe what was in front of us was, as a board member, it is my job to oversee the policies in which we write. And our policy, clearly, what showed light on is, we have schools that have different practices and, you know, for whatever practices that those have been accepted. But my job here is just to know, we have a policy, and this is what the policy was this past year, and if the AR needs to address something differently, or, but I thought my job just today was whether or not the policy was implemented or not.
I, because there is such wide agreement that the policy was not, the issue really seems to be, was the remedy that was offered, which district staff did offer a remedy, was it sufficient, which is why, you know, the foresters claim that it is not sufficient. And I think it's really our role to decide if it was sufficient or not.
So point of order, it seems that then, are there any more questions to, that would need some more information for us to answer that question? Otherwise, it's not for us to deliberate.
Yes, I believe that that, my sense is that we're ready to deliberate. And Donna and Tom have, or Donna and Eric have said that they're ready. So is there, are there ideas, things that board members would like to share their perspectives?
No more questions.
No more questions? Is there? Did you, did you have comments? Did you, did you have comments?
Are we going to deliberate now?
This is, this is not executive session, we have no, this is a public meeting, anybody can stay who wants to stay. I know that, sorry. This is pursuant to your complaint, policy KL. This is a difference, we, our board is, for better or worse, unaccustomed to this situation. So you're welcome to stay, you're welcome to leave, but we're going to deliberate now? Okay.
I believe that we need to, as difficult as the domino may be with this, that I'm asking the staff go back and find another remedy to be in compliance with how our policy and ARs have been stated now. And then we'll deal with how we need to move forward. But for right now, to come up with a different remedy, I think.
And what's been offered.
Than what's been offered.
I would second that, and I'd say something to deal with the specific harm.
My perspective, because I just, you know, have a high schooler right now, is that we are offering dual credit for such a wide variety of coursework, much of which is, you know, I guess my own perspective is that the benefit is actually the rigor that comes with the course and the credit that you get for almost nothing. That those are two very strong benefits. I also know that that is what colleges are looking at. They're looking for full schedules, they're looking for well-rounded individuals, they're looking for students who have challenged themselves on every front. I, I guess for myself, I know enough students who are taking not full course schedules, getting weighted credit solely to boost their GPAs. And I think that that is, you know, is not what we should be advocating for. So that's sort of all, that's my viewpoint. It needs fixing, it is definitely out of whack. And I appreciate that we've all been able to acknowledge that our current practice does not follow the AR in any way. I think of the six bullets, we don't follow three. Only one of which has been brought by the Forresters today, so.
My concern is that every high school has a, I mean, it's not necessarily weighted, what is weighted and what isn't, but every high school has a different way of delivering what, you know, the dual credits and communicating what's weighted and what's not weighted. That does really concern me that we, across the board, we don't have a consistent, any consistency in how our high schools are communicating that. So your point about, you know, you could be going to Aloha High School this year, but next year going to Beaverton High School, and it's a whole different expectation. So I'm just going to point out, I'm still deliberating about Forrester's case, but I have a major concern about the lack of consistency in our high schools with communication. That is disturbing.
In response to the Forresters, I do think we should take it back to administration to, in view of the fact that we did not follow our policy. And I think policy has to reign here. And we need to make sure we have practices that are in line. And so that's what, I think it's the best solution. I'm going to rudely text Tom, or Eric, opposite next to me, so it's on the top of my mind. Can you just ask over the phone, Eric, can?
Eric or Donna, do you guys want to express your thoughts? You can speak.
Okay, can you, can you hear me?
Yep, you're loud and clear.
Yeah, so, yeah, it seems like, you know, there's lots of work to base the policy. And it seems that, yeah, I'd say that they're not happy to be agent and their policies are not personally written right now. Maybe, I'm thinking maybe more meetings needed, or advanced steps. I'm sure that's in progress, but you know, it seems like there's a lot of work to do on this still, is my feel.
And this is Donna, and I totally agree with what everybody's saying. And I'm ready to vote. I guess I just want to say that I don't think that the remedy is sufficient.
Yes.
That's what I feel, it isn't sufficient, and I'm ready to vote on that.
Correct.
Do you want to make a motion, Donna?
Yes, I move that we call the question, was the remedy sufficient for the Forresters?
My second?
That's not what I'm asking.
Okay, we're going to have one of our Robert's Rules specialists help us out here.
I'm not the specialist, but I'll move that we have the remedy reviewed by the administration and not to accept it as it is.
Second?
I, I, I accept the revision to the motion.
Thanks, Donna.
You're welcome. So I move that we vote on the matter that's on the table as revised.
Okay, we're ready, is there any further discussion? Are there, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everybody, for our time. Having no further business, this matter is adjourned.